Coming out of COVID where a lot of people are going to be looking for funds. So that's probably not doable, but those were my thoughts under downtown that, you know, would be good to focus on. I know that.
Route one.
Yeah, and Cam were route one. I don't know if you had any.
And the highway department.
Yeah, here's what I'll specifically say about route one. In what I am looking specifically to do or have us do is not build anything. I'm not talking about that kind of development, but as I drive down route one, I see abandoned buildings, not abandoned like there's no owner, but like a gas station that the fair owns that has no use. It's not currently being used. I see buildings that have, you know, for lease signs and large vacancies. And I look at a business like The Bake Shop that moved out to route one and found great success. And so I've talked to them and what I think we can do is identify, is there something holding businesses back from developing in those properties? Is there a bylaw about signs that is getting in the way? Is there something that we can do to kind of push those properties or the owners of those properties or whatever it is? Why are there so many businesses or buildings on route one that are vacant? And what can we do, if anything, to push them out of vacancy and turn them into both things that look better because it's not an abandoned building and things that are driving and providing commercial revenue, commercial tax revenue?
Really, I know about the gas station.
Tell me about that because that's hard on, that's high on my list.
It's hard to find a number of other ones than.
Well, there's another one directly across the street that's being used as essentially as a parking lot.
A car park.
And then if you go.
Wait.
The oil company is just basically parking.
It's their business, it's their hub, it's where they got another one, but it's where they do.
I can tell you that just by poking my head in the window, I don't think they're actually doing business in that gas station garage. I think they have an office behind it.
Absolutely.
But anyway, alright.
No, 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 no. It's worth it to talk about it so we clear the record. I mean, I go in there, I pay my bill in there for oil and I get, so they have their office there and they have their mechanics come in there, they keep their supplies in there. It's very, it's vibrant. If you were from a business point of view, it's very vibrant. And I think they purchased that very small building behind there also. I don't know if they purchased it or, they've got control over it. It had been pesticide, some kind of a pesticide company, but they're out of there.
Okay, well, and then my bigger picture would be, is there a way to work with that to reorganize it? I don't know.
So first of all, so we have one, we have the gas station across the street from that, which is the property of the fairgrounds. Yes, that's abandoned, yeah.
Yeah, which is very, you know, I mean, that alone is a big enough goal for me. And then when I talk about out those, what I call office parks, out where the bake shop, every one of those.
Office on north.
Yeah, but they're multiple. Where Town Hall was, the one across the street from there, where The Bake Shop is, all of that, every one of those has for lease signs, vacancy signs. So they're underutilized right now and they're being utilized primarily as office space where we can see that The Bake Shop has done great success in using it as more of a commercial space, more of a retail space. And so I would like to see more retail activity on that end of route one.
So you'd like to have a discussion with the town? So I should see if there's something the town can do.
Again, my discussion with The Bake Shop, they identified some struggles they're having there in terms of, you know, bylaws and property, specific property owner stuff. So again, I'd like us to big picture, take a look and see why are there, are there more opportunities for retail there and is there anything the town can do down there?
Yeah, I would like to see if, maybe you can help us with this, Kevin. Can we get a list of the properties that, the properties that are vacant? And we must have an idea of that. But in order to have a valid discussion, it's important to understand what the facts are. So if you can get that, that will be, I think that'd be good input.
It would also be really useful to know what businesses are up there, not by name, but the kind of business there aren't because going by it, you can tell the fab shops, that's easy. But there's so many little doors, you know, and.
One of the challenges is that there isn't, there hasn't historically, as I understand it, been a mechanism to really push people for business license. So they come in, they file with the town, we have on record, we have some, we know we don't have all.
I got it.
And I've had conversations with a new building inspector on that. Also, we talked about the oil company across there. We've actually had conversations about that and zoning, what it actually allows for there and interpretation historically of that particular property. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's something that has come up and we have kicked the tires on it, I guess a little bit. Generally speaking, though, from a use perspective, which is really what we're talking about in a community conversation about what we want to see on that route one, and I've spoken to, it's actually on the list, it's the master plan. That, if we receive funding for, will be a long process, but a very comprehensive and community-driven process so that we can understand what those limitations are, understand what the community wants and understand if and what changes we might want to put out there from a zoning perspective in the future.
So Kevin, as of today, you said the Topsfield Fair owns the, that old gas station.
That's right.
Okay, so is there, what is it zoned for? What are our limitations as of today? And not to put you on the spot, but my sense is you know all this stuff, so.
We've got a little knowledge.
Alright, so just get me knowledgeable. That piece of property for 20 years has blown my mind. Seems like a wasted opportunity.
So generally on that property, as I understand it, is that it's part of the greater property for the Topsfield Fair and Essex agricultural. That particular property, if it was something to be used for a different use, arbitrarily calling it a more productive use, activation of the space, that property, that parcel could be carved out. Currently it's under agriculture and so, because it's partly greater. If it does, I believe that they would have to pay back five years' worth of reduced taxes for being zoned at, or being taxed at the rate of agriculture at a 20% discount. So they have to pay that back. If somebody comes with a good business plan and a business model that someone wants to invest in, that's not going to stop them. I think, though, it's obviously owned by the fairgrounds, their primary purpose is a fair and their auxiliary uses from an event standpoint in a lot of ways. And I do know that there have been a number of people who over the years have reached out on that property. Obviously, nothing that has reached the point of shoveling ground, but.
Kevin, is that one of our own rules that we can waive? It seems like that's very, it's deterring any business if we say anyone coming in there is going to be this big financial liability to the fairgrounds in back taxes.
Well, I think, just putting on my former real estate hat, I think that would be part of the negotiation between the potential investor.
So if I'm the developer, I know that I'm going to have to write a check basically to pay those back taxes is what you're saying.
Is that just a Topsfield rule or is that a state?
Never by state law.
That's state law.
Okay, it's a special accommodation, it's an important accommodation for agriculture so that they don't have to pay huge taxes when they're trying to just follow the land. So it's a protection for them if in fact they change over, they have a pretty good investment sitting there, in other words, and, oh, you mean it's worth $5 million? I thought it was only worth $100,000. Of course, that's one thing, but if you turn it, you have the other thing. So that's why, it all makes sense and it's all part of the standard to do that, chapter two.
Has there been an effort in the past to do something about that parcel of land? I mean, I know it's already been buzzed about, but has anyone driven a plan and said, I want to purchase that? Or is this like, you know, banging head on the wall?
I mean, one of the things would be to talk to Essex agricultural society and the answer is probably no.
Yeah, they've been approached and not been interested.
Yeah.
So, that again, that's hearsay.
I confirm there have been groups that have approached on that property and as of right now, I don't believe there's been any, it hasn't moved past that initial interest stage.
Could I just say, since we're on route one, I think about, there is some very healthy businesses on.
Yeah, I'm not saying that route one is dead.
Real quick, Essex co-op probably does more business in volume and sales than the entire downtown Topsfield does, that one site. Obviously, the Essex, the fairgrounds is a big commercial site. There's some people like this or go like that. Lawton Welding, I mean, Lawton, he's done a great job. I've watched him grow. I used to go in there to get a quick little job done on some kind of a piece of metal with, you know, fixes for me or whatever else they would do. This guy is doing, he's doing steel detailing and he's doing real stuff and he's grown. He's picked up all along there. He did the new building, which had been a residential building, he turned it into a commercial building. He built a commercial building and placed it. And then he bought the, had the NBD and he's got the other stuff up with his stuff in the back. We've got the collaborative school, it used to be a bowling alley, that sort of thing. It's now a school, third library in the work that they do there.
The Petco does very well.
Across the street, we got the Petco, I'm delighted that that's there. And then as you go up, things like Fairview Machine, I mean, these guys, these guys that take, they're protecting America by producing things for the Defense Department. They, I mean, and they can't, they have trouble hiring good people around there. Oh, and they have a co-op even with the Essex Aggie or Tech School, Essex Agricultural and Technical School. It's just some healthy businesses up there, I mean.
Which to me is.
Without mentioning the name, there's a guy up there that's got like $3 million of equipment in an office space that's equal to about from here back to the accounting office back there. I mean, we should really be aware of some of the neat things that are going on, but I do think it's also helpful, we need to understand what's vacant there and why. And let's see what we can do on that.
Because, just to wrap it up, I 100% agree with your point, which I think indicates to me that it could be that much more. Like, given the fact that we have vibrant, successful businesses, it kills me that we have as many vacancies as we do at the same time.
Remember that the Business Highway North is zoned for mile one too.
Yeah.
I think one of the things is that it doesn't look good. There are lots of sections of route one that looks like it's kind of dilapidated and that more could be done there just because of the types of businesses that are out there. They're not glamorous, they're not pretty, they're, you know, they're doing good business, but you wouldn't know that necessarily dropped.
But they're going to affect your businesses, they should be able to pull in retail around them. And there should be other opportunities other than well-kept secrets. And I totally agree with what you said, but if we've got X amount of empty stores or storefronts, we should be able to attract some.
One of the things that we can do, if, if it's the right thing to do, if the people want it and we want it and whatever else, is Business Highway North, it's Business Highway North Park and it's intended for offices in that. Retail is not allowed. That is not zoned for retail. And in fact, people have built the buildings that way for that. But if you want to do something to help a business, go get, help Fairview Machine build a bigger building there without getting into trouble with the conscom. I mean, I've talked, I've talked to.
Is that what I do?
To, anyway, they would love to do that. Right now, they've got two buildings and they've got this lush thing next to it. They could fill it out. I mean, that's perhaps some things that we'd be able to help out with.
Well, I think we've probably dumped in enough at this point to see some opportunities, so we'll move on at this point. But the last one is general housing needs, affordable housing policy. That was on from last year.
John put that on last year, it was just thrown in. I don't believe it belongs there. It's not a primary goal in my mind at all. We're going to have a 40B, for example, whatever they're doing there. We've got the Amber Woods. This is not, this should not be a goal and I suspect that if I go out and ask the average citizen, should this be a primary goal of Board of Selectmen, the answer would be no. So I think we ought to take it off. John stepped that on there.
Except that when you guys did the thing upstairs, housing ranked pretty high on what people were looking for, like right after restaurant, didn't it?
It was high and I think probably the master plan would be addressing what could you possibly do down here and what would you need? Because the subject came up about, it's very hard with septic to do additional apartments down here. You'd have to take a larger look at where you want the town to be and what kind of utilities would support that. So that could be addressed in the master plan. I think just taking it out as an individual line item and trying to address it in and of itself right now probably is not as productive.
I think it should go off. That would, we would not take it off now, but my vote would be to take that off.
Yeah, I do think it's scooped up in the master plan and that's probably where it needs to lie. I don't know, Kevin, I know you are rooftops before retail, so if you want to weigh in at all.
One of the things with the master plan, it is a catch-all, but a lot of times what helps us with the master plan is there's studies done pre the master plan. For instance, the study that you championed, Mad Chair for the downtown, that'll be implemented and used as part of that master plan study. So if, housing's a significant item in general, supply and demand, if nothing else, in the community of what the needs are, because we've seen the housing market recently and it's tough for people with fixed incomes who have been lifelong Topsfield to downsize and stay in the community. So understanding that, there's certainly a great benefit broadly in that sense. It might not be something that someone might even recognize as being, because it's a path of maybe solving some of those solutions around, you know, when you talk about commercial, if you do some housing development, you could have some revenues on an annual basis that come back. You check the box on some housing that's needed, that could be a benefit to people who might not see two or three steps down the road that the housing is needed, but at the same time, it is a little bit more granular than say, some of the other things we're talking about. So whatever the board's desires are, I know MAPC, I would say though that MAPC does offer technical assistance and something that they would look at as a housing study. And so maybe not as a goal, but there's still lots that we do in a given year, in a given week, in a given day, that might not be necessarily a direct goal, but still accomplishing, pursuing something like that could still happen even if it's not necessarily a direct goal.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on then to the communication and transparency. I think both of you, I think that as an item, so we can start with you and get your thoughts on it.
I'm sure you all are tired of hearing me yell about this because I've been saying it since even before I went on this board, but I don't think that this town does a good enough job with communication. Not because we don't want to or because we're trying not to, but I don't know that we have the tools to do it as well as we could right now. I don't know that we have, you know, and I'm not suggesting that we do, but larger cities, for instance, have whole communication departments or a single person. I know in my day job, I call up a town and they'll be like, oh, let me send you to my communication person. Obviously, we're not big enough to, and nor have the money to fund such a person, but there needs to be, I mean, like right now, if I call, I'm going to get Deb, Deb's going to tell me that Kevin's not available. I'm going to go to the website, the website is not going to have anything that's up to date. We don't have a town Facebook page, we don't have a town Twitter account and there's going to be no place for me as a journalist to find that information. Not that I'm saying we need to serve the needs of journalists, but what if me, the resident, wants to find that information? That's not also out there. And there are times when I think we should be proactive in letting people know about, for instance, an alcohol licensing hearing that's coming up. Right now, we don't have any great way to do that. I don't think it is a big enough thing that we're going to reverse 911 it or we're going to use the text messaging system. And when we had, you know, that sticker that was on a pole in downtown, I feel like we should have said something about that, but again, I don't think it elevated to reverse 911. So what I'm saying is we need better channels to communicate both proactively and reactively and we need to know who's going to do that and who's going to form those messages.
That's one of the sticking points, or it has been, it's like, who does it?
Yeah.
You know, because I don't think anyone would argue with the need to get more information out there and to be proactive. I know even for our tomato festival, the bulk of the information is all over on TCP's website. Gorgeous website and it gives you everything that you need and links to sign up and information, but nobody would know how to find that.
Nobody would?
Nobody would know to go to the topsfieldcommunitypartnership.org to find information about the tomato festival, you know, they just wouldn't. A couple of people that I talked with, they went to our town website and couldn't find it. Now, it is off to the side and we did link it to the TCP website, but it's a multiple step. It's not as easy as just, as you say, going to the Facebook page, but it comes back to who updates that, who writes that, who the resource is for. So that's been a sticking point in the past.
I think the other element, it's very tough to follow Marshall because he covers about 90% of that stuff, but I think the other element on the communication front is, and I learned this in January, is how much misinformation exists out there and the right venue for correcting misinformation in a forum that's not argumentative and is not meant to, you know, incite people to sound off and get pissed and raise their, you know, choose sides, but just an information flow that people know they can trust. And that is, we don't have that, except for the town website, sorry. I don't mean to say that, except that's not what it's used for.
Right.
Right? And I don't think that that's a hard fix. I truly don't think it's a big fix. Your point's a really good one and that is who's going to, you know, who's going to be the day-to-day on it? Who's going to be the moderator on it? And are there going to be sites where people are invited to give feedback or not? Is it a little more one-way? So all those things have to be contemplated, I think they do, but I think they should be because of the amount of misinformation that's out there about how we run things, how the town is run.
I couldn't agree with you more on that, Cam. There are more things that I see, but I don't respond. I mean, we actually have a policy that the board approved about a year or two back about posting on Facebook, because one person can't be representing the town and getting involved in the dialogue, we wanted to stay away from that.
But with a new place, that's not, that doesn't impact.
That's right. So up to this point, it's been hard.
With a new web presence, whether it's a Facebook page.
For instance, town of Topsfield official Facebook page.
Right, right. So those rules wouldn't apply.
Okay. Then whoever is doing the posting, we know who that person is, they're getting correct information and.
And the rules of engagement would have to be policed, it would have to be monitored, it couldn't be free flow. It couldn't be a place for someone to talk about leaf blowers and, you know, that kind of junk. There are plenty of places for that. But I think, I think we could have remarkable opportunity if we did it right, if we pulled off the communications correctly.
And if I could, out of all of that, say, a Facebook presence.
That is an easy and effective place to start. It's not the be all and end all of it, but yes, that is a thoroughly effective place to start.
And the investment is extraordinarily minimal and there's, we don't have to ask for money.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you ask for time.
But we are back at that point though, to the day-to-day and moderator.
Well, and again, I think, I don't think we need to get too into this because this is what our work session of a couple weeks from now is about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But yes, that would be the place to start. And again, not the place to end, but a good place to start.
And it represents a, yeah.
And just as an aside, not that I don't think anyone here doesn't know it, it's a standard thing. Most towns have official Facebook pages, so.
The other piece I hear.
Can I just, yeah, and from what I understand too, there's different ways of using Facebook.
Oh, 100%.
It can be a push system or it can be also.
Yep, yep, yep. And that's part of what our discussion would be.
There are best practices that have been discussed at MMA at various times about how to deal with, how to use a Facebook and things. We wouldn't have to do that from scratch, we can get a lot of good ideas.
Yep.
The other one, I know, Cam, that you were talking about, which is kind of the marketing campaign presenting Topsfield.
I slipped into my vernacular of work on that one and it came out a little too strong, but, you know, I think back to what moved me from Beverly to Topsfield in 1996 and it was the physical opportunity. It was the assets that this town has. It sounds a little hokey, but, you know, we've got canoeing, we've got hiking trails, we've got great biking around here. And I, I just get the sense that that's a guarded secret now. You know, I think 20 years, 30, whatever it was, 25 years ago, it was different. I mean, in my friend group of Beverly, Hamilton, Wentworth, Mipswich, Danvers, whatever, you know, this was the desirable location for, it's not about, you know, how you dress and what you drive, it's about great place to raise your kids, incredible schools, value system, very, very high. And I like those things. I think those things offer extraordinary opportunity for us. A marketing campaign is strong, but I mean, we have to sort of look back to those values and I think we have to put our money where our mouth is and show those values if we want to keep bringing in young families to fill in the people who are leaving.
Right, and it's, I agree with you and I think it's multifaceted. When we were talking about just putting the wayfinding signs together, it was like, how do you want to present Topsfield? What's the feel to draw people in? And there was an effort to make sure that, you know, the branding was consistent. You know, when you come into the downtown, the signs match the street signs and it all had a common look and feel. And one of the ways to do that, I know that you guys have been working on the website and it's had some difficulty in coming out, but the website's a huge tool to do that as well. Back when we, before the work started on the website, we got talking with Kevin about what should be on a website and one of the things that was just what you were talking about, Cam, it's like, you know, what to do when you visit Topsfield, why Topsfield? So there was a component there that said, this is all the amazing things you can do when you come to Topsfield. Another one was for business, how to do business, why would you want to be a business in Topsfield? And if you get a chance to look at the TCP website, it's amazing. It's that whole component you just talked about, the farms, the Audubon, the canoeing, the conservation land, they've got it all on there and we just need to link into it. We don't even need to update it.
And really, that's where it belongs, that's a great way, that's good.
And someone wouldn't know to necessarily find it on that website, but if they come to the town website and it's like, what to do when you visit Topsfield, you link right in, you'd say, oh my gosh, this is such a well-guarded secret. Who knew you had, we have seven wedding venues here. I mean, who knew the amount of conservation land for, to walk and, you know, hike and snow ski and, so there are so many things, but that is just an amazing website that they put together and it conveys all that information that you just said. So it's kind of multifaceted to communicate, not just to the people in town what's going on, but to others, why come here and shop and live and do business, et cetera.
So it's a different reason that people are going to try to get information, whatever, but at a high level, it seems to me, somebody is going to be looking for, where can I go canoeing? And so they put canoeing North Shore, canoeing Massachusetts, Essex County, I don't know, whatever, they put that out. And then what we want to happen is T, C.
TCP.
TCP, to come up on the website with all of that information, that's great, but that's being driven by search arguments. Again, different people, different things.
Yep.
I don't know what to look for. Yeah, just like to have some fun. You're not going to find that probably by doing a search.
No, it'd be better than that, but I mean, we can see what they're searching on. So we can go figure out what people are searching on that's bringing them here and then start to focus our language around those terms.
Good, good, yes, yes. And so I think that TCP should be looking at who, yeah, who's coming into there.
Yeah, they're, you know, their board is five people and have been very busy working on a number of projects and they just got this up and running, so they have not had the opportunity yet, although we do have someone on the ECDC, Rosie, who is kind of skilled in tagging like that for searches and she said that she would work with them. So it's kind of like phase two. The first phase is to get all that data up and it's up there now.
And you're good to work with websites and getting the data as to who's coming in and why they're coming in and stuff like that? I mean, that's some part of your business?
Yeah.
That stuff?
Excellent. So I think this one definitely is on our, you know, our list of top priorities, so I don't.
Or to use it.
I don't know that we need to add anything more at this point. The next one, there were all of us, town services, organizational operations. So there's definitely a focus here on parks and community and that area, there's IT and there's the human resources component. So they don't want to speak about any of those piece parts that they thought were most important or priority to them.
The only thing I mentioned, and I'll do it in like two sentences, is obviously we've begun the process of hiring a recreation director and I would really like to lean into that new position to, to start to look at our recreational opportunities that are, you know, I think a lot of times people just think of recreation as youth sports and it's so, so much more than that.
Yeah, definitely. And that's, that's down here, so I think probably a number of us wrote down enhancing overall recreational opportunities, so that's, that's a good one. Okay, moving on, the financials and fiscal management. I'll just mention here, and Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure that our long-term expense budget and capital budget takes. I'm not sure that our long-term expense budget and capital budget takes into consideration what the schools' requirements are moving forward. I may be wrong. Does that currently?
The capital plan incorporates our elementary schools.
Does it for Masco though? Cause I know there's like, I hear the number thirty million in capital requirements over the next X number of years. And it's like, that should weigh in, I think, to our decisions. That's part of what our taxpayers will be paying for to look down the road and say, this is what's coming our way.
Yeah, it, it, so the, um, the Masco bus budget is a bottom-line budget, cause of the way it's set up with the three communities, including the capital components to it. Absolutely, we need to understand what those are gonna look like so we can make good decisions. From, from our five-year capital planning, we, we look at, I've, well, historically, what I took on, how I viewed it, has always been looking at from a local level, outside the base, the bottom-line budget for Masco of, you know, based on the guidelines, three hundred thousand for free cash to help support the capital needs. Um, and looking at other revenue sources like grants to help supplement that, to try to do as much as we can in a given year. Our biggest expenses coming up are gonna be at the tri-town. We have, I think, over five million dollars, uh, sorry, three-point-four million dollars next year, two year, uh, next year, sorry, next year, projected out, and that is, I'm sorry, two years out. That's projected out at the elementary schools for the ADA feasibility studies between the two schools, a few million dollars, and a million and a half for the windows at the schools. So those are our local dollars going towards that through the elementary schools. Those are accounted for. But the Masco has always been, I think, low, if Topsfield at least, looked at differently. We could have that conversation about how we wanna incorporate it if we do a five-year ma- uh, capital plan.
I just think it would be important if, if we have to pay for that. It's our taxpayer who has to pay for the, the local as well as for Masco. That if we're making decisions about what we're going to approve, or what overrides we're gonna do, that we should see everything that's coming down the pike. Especially since Masco pretty much knows what those numbers look like. And I just think it should be part of the discussion, and I, I don't, I couldn't actually really tell you now what's coming down in the next five years for Masco to consider when we're making these other decisions, so.
I don't either, I know that the new administration's...
But you don't know either, that's right. So we, we know what they did, they did the study, which is good. They had somebody come and do the study, and we know the dollars that are in that. And so you could turn around and say, based on what they told us, two million dollars this year, and then ten mil, five million dollars or whatever. They had it broken out in a number of years. And so you could simply say, oh, oh, okay, uh, we, we need to bond it, and we're gonna bond it for how long? Twenty years, okay. So, and Topsfield is thirty percent of the school, okay? So, I mean, you could come up and come up with the number of dollars that we're gonna have to add to Article Fifth each year for that part of debt. But that's about as good as we can do.
Even that, I don't think we have those numbers.
So they said, we have to spend, this is what came in, we have to spend this, and then we have to, you know, we're three years into that now. And none of that's been spent. So there's a mix between what a consultant said you need to do, and you signed up for, and what you're beginning to execute.
Yeah, and I would say, I don't know, you might know the numbers, or Kevin, you might. I have no idea of what that is. I don't know how much that they've actually spent so far, or anticipate spending for the next couple of years. I don't know what those numbers are. And yet those should be millions of dollars that are coming at the same time that we have millions of dollars coming down.
The, the big thing that's happened though is that we've picked up, we've gotten the bonus of cutting the, the bill for debt because the debt has all rolled off. And some people would say, ah, they should have gone out and bought, gotten some debt to do some things before it rolled off, so we're all... That hasn't happened, and it's over. We've already enjoyed the fact that we didn't have to have, we had some extra money because Masco went down, so to speak. So it's gonna come back, and it's gonna come back in order of magnitude, you know, we're, we're talking about several hundred thousand dollars a year. Easily, as far as debt that they're gonna have to put out in order to do things like roofs, okay? Maybe some technology upgrades or whatever. There's a whole bunch of things there. And, and I can find that, the presentation from two, three years ago that Masco did, and it lays it all out. But again, they're not necessarily following it, but it gives us, it gives us a good idea as, I think they have at this point now. They have to put a lot of emphasis on it.
No, I don't.
We don't, well, we know what they had from two or three years ago, that I can give you. Well, that, that's, that's absolutely available. Let me see, what I find...
In which case, it should be there for our discussion to understand what's going to be coming down the pike to make an informed decision. And having that discussion with the school on...
We have to have the discussion with the school, as you're saying.
Yeah, cause I would also say, whatever they're planning two or three years ago probably isn't necessarily their plan today. So where do we stand today?
They did not follow the plan so far, that...
Yeah, so my, my point on here was to have the discussion with the school, to have much more dialogue and to look at that bigger picture.
Excellent, we should, we should do that. And, but I think what it's gonna come down to, as much as anything, is this is the amount of money that's going to be added on an annual basis in debt for us to do these, the kinds of things that we want to do. That's about the best that we're gonna, I think, get. And, but they have to work a little bit harder than they've been working now, I think, on trying to get their plan together and get it out for the towns.
There's some other items in here, um, I don't know, that seem newly added, if anybody wants to speak to them.
And let me just finish, cause it was a thought. Kevin does the five-year plan, and he has the windows on Proctor School. And he has the, okay? So those are detailed things that he has. We, we will never have those things for Masco in our plan. What we're gonna have is, in my mind, it's gonna be this much for debt in this year, this much for debt this year, this year, this year, this year. As an estimate, that's very helpful.
I don't know those numbers.
I don't know those either, and they haven't provided them, they haven't.
Right, and that's why I'm just suggesting that we have that discussion, so we know what's coming.
That's right.
One other just wrinkle to it is, we, we just went through this at town meetings, that the enrollment. And this year, we actually got, Topsfield had an increase on our appropriation because of enrollment numbers and some other factors. But even if, you know, five, ten years out, enrollment's gonna have a fluctuation of how much that, that service on a yearly basis that we're actually picking up locally.
Should be less than usual though, cause we just put through the changes to the appropriations and smoothed it, so.
Exactly, so there's, there's, it should be smoother, absolutely. But we, at least having a, a, an idea. I know last year, they, at that, at this time, or six months ago even, when they were going through it, they did not have something presentable on the capital plan. I know they were talking about it, and I believe working on it, but there wasn't something that we could even say, this is what we're projecting over the next five, ten. I think the new administration's trying to get their arms around that, cause it's a big, it's a big numbers that would be coming.
All right, Dick, did you have a couple of additional items on here? I see an application that presents vendor and payroll expenditures online.
Yep, uh, this is the idea, there's a number of ones out there, Civic Plus, Go Gov, whatever, all of these, Munis itself, Tyler Software, that give, provide opportunities to put these things out there. I think it's, it's part of the transparency that towns are doing, cities are doing, and I think that we should be looking at trying to get that stuff out there.
So what exactly is this, that this is the money we're spending?
What it literally has is the, the bill pays, uh, the payrolls, yeah.
You're saying shift it all online?
It's not a, yeah, there's not a lot of, you don't have to generate any data. The data exists, it's a matter of bringing it through. And so Civic Plus and that, they do it with the public information that's available. And so you can see where your percentage, the police percentage, we haven't done anything, and they just take the public data out of the state and they do that. But if you wanna get down to the, the more gritty level, so to speak, then you have to start making available what's going on in the town and push it in. The easiest one that has it is Munis, because we, we don't have it on our computers, they have it on theirs. But it can be provided, because the other ones have done it, Civic Plus, whatever. Make, if we give them the authority, they have the link, and they can bring down the data, and they can, uh, they, they can provide it. We pay for that, it's a, it's a service that they provide. Right now, the ser- the service that they provide with regular data, they know, they're not charging anybody to do it. They're looking for that as a way to get people to wanna use their services.
Is there a cost for this?
For this sort of thing, it's gonna be a cost. Cause now, now we've gone beyond what's publicly available, out of state data and things like that. And so this is more useful data for people who wanna see what's going on and things like that. Yeah, it'll cost.
This is a ClearGov, in essence.
ClearGov is one, Munis has it, Civic, uh, there's a, a number of them that are doing this sort of thing. And other towns have them.
So is it aggregate data that's publicly available?
Totally, yeah.
Let me give you an example of, where you might get into a question. It has the payroll out there. And so somebody may say, oh, you know, we really don't have to put John Jones payroll, but it is public, you can. So you say, no, 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 we're just putting out...
You can select what else is available.
Police officer one, police officer two, police officer three. When it comes down to police chief, his name isn't there, but you know who it is. But, but that's all right. Anybody could ask for that data and come to us, and at times they do come to us. And certainly the newspapers come annually to the town, and they say, you know, you gotta give us the top number salaries that people make. And they publish those things, but this is right available for people online, and it, it's, you, you put it, set it in, and step back, and it just happens, and then, then you ask questions.
Very curious what costs that is.
Oh, it's there, you don't have to go scrambling for the information.
Are there other components of Munis that you were looking at to try to improve efficiencies? I mean, this is one that could be...
It's, it's different, this, this doesn't really improve efficiency. This is transfer, what I mentioned was transparency.
Are there a lot of requests coming in for this?
Well, that's a different story. If we're getting a lot of requests, then it would be an efficiency thing. I just don't know how many requests we're getting on this.
So I haven't, I mean, no one's reached out specifically looking for that type of granular data or compare, you know, your tax bill of X equates to this many, um, police officers, like, bad example, but that's kind of what that product provides. ClearGov, a few years ago when they were starting up, approached the communities to work in, and we were actually one of the first communities to engage and look at Topsfield doing it. We decided not to. Um, the cost was roughly five thousand a year to have the service. And so I'm sure it's gone up since then. I don't know, I had a look since.
Does it scale on size of town, or is it just a flat thing?
I haven't, I don't remember.
It's got to. I mean, Beverly is fifty thousand versus Topsfield is sixty-four hundred, it's, it can be the same.
Right, because budgetary, right, exactly. So, um, but what, um, when we did look at it, um, like I said earlier, it's, it's, it's simple, honestly, simple. But it's a way that people can relate to how their money's being spent at the end of the day.
I mean, I would say that I like, I have no problem with the idea of it, but I would be very curious about the cost for it, particularly given the fact that there doesn't seem to be a demand for it right now.
The other thing is, I, I know that there were a, a number of functions within Munis that were available that we hadn't tapped into yet.
Okay.
And I'd be curious to see all of those, you know, kind of a prioritization of what do we gain from implementing that functionality or getting more people on it? I think just recently, what, you got the library on Munis?
We're, so, um, we've been, we've been developing a plan. It was a, initially, there was, right now, we are not using the departments as efficiently, I think, or effectively as we could on different elements of inputting data, really, uh, inputting invoices and other things. And so we've lined up a few departments, cause we don't wanna do it all at once and just throw it out, and everyone's like, um... We wanna set up a plan of how we implement it, so we can have a hands-on approach to build people up and get them experienced, trained, and then be able to be a trainer for the next group, for the next person, as we continue to move. So right now, the library is teed up to be our first, followed by the fire department, and likely the police department, as well as the town administrator office, um, when capacity allows to take that on. But ultimately, the goal will be to have the support system in place, rather than just saying, here it is, figure it out, have the right training, have the right expectations laid out, and then people can use it and develop more efficiencies that way.
Back, uh, was it two years ago now, uh, when I, I worked with Kelly to put together that tech report, which said, what is all the software we're using, what is all the hard rig it's in town hall? And under the Munis category, there were a number of recommendations from people in the various departments about functionality to use, or ways the departments could use Munis that would be more effective. Things like the payroll processing.
Instead of doing it on paper and payroll processing and sending it in, or sending somebody down, whether it all, doing it in an email, did I? Yes, you did it yourself, so there's...
So there were a, a list of things that they said, these were all good things to do with Munis. And this is another good thing to do with Munis. I would just, uh, my suggestion would be to take a look at all those things that you could possibly do with Munis, because it is going to take resources to make this happen.
Oh, that, that's part of the reason we haven't implemented it yet. We wanna do it right, we wanna make sure the right people are available. Jackie's our, our Munis person, um, and we have a task force of Jackie, Catherine, and really myself as the core group that are looking to plan and implement. And so we've been meeting, we have met, um, there was a couple of, we had to upgrade the software to the two thousand nineteen update, which we've just done, which they felt they needed time for them to get up to speed with before we start introducing something, cause they need to be educated and well-versed in it, so if someone has a question. So that's been some of the, I guess I call them delays at this point. And then they end up closing the fiscal, that takes a lot of time out of everybody. So we're getting, we're targeting, we have been targeting September at this point, and that's our goal. Sometimes September's enough to kick it off, but we need to build the infrastructure behind it to make it right.
Yeah.
So let me try to explain it, this, this, I would say, this way too, some of the Munis tool stuff. What we were just talking about is taking things that we're doing today, right now, and instead of having one person or one group responsible for entering all the data, how do they get the data? Well, they have some of it right there, and other, that's, you could send it. What we're doing is simply asking somebody else in the organization to learn how to do it themselves, and therefore, okay? So that's using what we have today as tools in a better way. There's another set of tools that Munis has, that Tyler has, to, to help in other application areas. One of the application areas that they refer to, I'm not an expert in this, but they have a module base called CSS, customer self-service. And there are three sections of that. One of them is employees, one of that is vendors, and one of it is citizens. So what is it for employees? So right now, when John Jones wants to know why his health insurance, whatever it is, or I wanna change my health insurance, he, hello, can I, can I talk with Jackie? Yeah, okay, no, she's not here, okay, well, it's not Jackie, it's, uh, it's Janet. The self-serve is, and it take, it's, it takes software, and then it does take a certain amount of training. But then the citizen, then the employees themselves can go get the information themselves and not bother with a phone call. So it's easier for them, and it's easier for the office here. And therefore, we can hopefully drive down the labor here. We don't need to get another few hours for this, or need to get another person for that. We're, people are starting to do the things themselves. The vendor one is the same, where the vendor gets self-serve and get the data. And then the last one, and perhaps a more exciting one, is the one that, but to me, it's not, to get, to get the efficiencies, this stuff, is the citizen, where the citizen's able to come in and get information and data out of, out of our systems.
Yeah, I, my, my thought relative to like Jackie, she's our Munis person. So unless we can say to Munis, you go ahead, access our data, put them through this, you know, uh, application, and make it visible to residents, and we'll pay you the five thousand dollars, and you do it yourself. You don't need Jackie, you don't need resources on here. If they can do it all themselves, then the decision is just, do we wanna spend five thousand a year to have that tool? If they need Jackie and they need questions here, you're banging against the same resource in this building to enhance our use of Munis.
Okay.
And that, that's the only thing, is that where there are other things stacked up, that they were like, oh, we really wanna get these three Munis things done. And if we do this particular one, Jackie's gonna have to work with Munis to get this up and running, and these other three things don't go forward. So it's just a prioritization, what we think is most important. And I don't know, maybe they can just access our data and not need anybody on this end, and then it's just a financial decision. Is that a service that we think is worthwhile enough to the residents that we can spend the five or six thousand a year?
But I would also, I, I really think, and because it happened on thought, is get the employee self-serve going. That's, that's where you...
Yeah, that's number one.
That's where you can really help. Cause that includes the teachers, the aides, the people in this building, the people in police department. And, and it makes it much easier for them to get their data.
And it's worth noting too, cause with the group, we identified pretty quickly, um, when we started auditing our existing uses, our licenses to use Munis. We've gotta spend a lot of time, and we've already spent a lot of time, on ensuring that people have the right cur- um, levels of access. There's certain people we found who had access to everything that shouldn't. And so a lot of times what happened is we had a license, and it would just say, someone would leave, someone would come in, and they'd just, that's your license, without checking to see what those, those safeguards... your license, without checking to see what those, those safeguards were.
Yeah.
So we're, we're working on a lot of fronts to kind of, like I said, set up the systems to be successful, and a lot of it's taking some time to make sure we're, build it back up.
Well, we've got under IT improvements, increased effective use of Munis, so the employee self-serve, uh, you know, a focus on that one. Okay, um, anything else on the financials to talk about at this point? Okay, um, select board new responsibilities, overseeing water enterprise, et cetera. That's you, Dick?
Yeah.
If you wanna.
So we have a, you know, essentially, we have some businesses now that we've taken on, the water enterprise is a business of sorts, and to understand where we are on a periodic basis, maybe quarterly, whatever it is, what are the rate, what are we collecting rates, what's happening? Um, it, it's, it, it, it needs, it needs to be done, it needs to be monitored to understand what we have, and then it provides some feed for us as we're approaching town meeting as to why we have to do this, we have to do that, instead of having, we don't, we don't have the, the, the boards doing these, you know, we, we need, we need to do that sort of thing. The cemeteries, we are, quote, the commissions, we ought to understand, we need some policies. Uh, I, I don't know what policies we can get. I, I don't know how much you remember, how much you got involved with it, Marshall, but we need the policies as to how we sell the graves, uh, who gets the graves, what, how do we waive something if somebody doesn't fit our policy that says, you need to be a resident of Topsfield? Yes, but I moved out two months ago, or my mother, my mother lived there for all this time.
Who's doing that right now? Because?
I don't know. I don't know. It's us. We're it.
It's a combination of Elizabeth and Gary right now, that, basically, when request comes in, and they, for a lot, or a plot, I should say, or what have you, it's there. If it rises to being an issue, there's a question.
Where are the policies? Do we have the policy? Do we know what they are?
I haven't, I don't, I know that there are, there are policies that exist. I haven't actually had a chance to necessarily go through them. Um, so I can't speak to the specifics within those. But I do know, for instance, you referenced, Mr. Yan, the residency requirement, and that's something that they're aware of, because I know we had a couple inquiries on that.
And, and just, and I know this isn't really the point, but, I mean, I, I don't know what the policy's written down, but the general way it worked is if you, say, didn't live in Topsfield, and you wanted to be buried here, you would just write a letter telling us why, and what your connection to Topsfield is. And then we would look at it and vote it, yea or nay. That, that was what, how we looked at, you know, that particular policy. So I assume that Gary and, you know, that's what they're doing. They're basically applying that same kind of metric.
It is a judgment call.
No, no, it is. It is, yes, a hundred percent.
But it's their judgment call. It's not the slide board. The slide board, if, if someone says, I don't like your answer, I'm gonna elevate this, and then it moves to the slide board.
It's typically, so typically, what'll happen is, yeah, based on how the, the home rule petition was written, it's similar to the town administrator by law, that when I go to hire somebody, it's a power of me to hire that employee, um, I'd say, update you, if there's an issue or a problem or what have you. So if Superintendent Wilds comes to a situation where there's a decision point, something new, uh, he's been very good to communicate with me. I'll say, well, what's, what have we done in the past? How did we handle it before? What's the past precedent? Do we have a written policy regarding it? And then we'll basically collaborate on the next step on it. It's an operational day-to-day thing that comes through, typically, so.
Okay, so this is more ensuring the establishment and overseeing policies, procedures, and reporting.
Right. Because the citizens would expect us to do, and.
Yeah. Could that go under, uh, town services, organizational operations? I mean, does it rise to its own goal?
This is something that, this is something we, we wanna put in place, and then hopefully, once it's in place, we have our procedures, we know what to do, people know what to do. We change them over time.
Yeah.
And we'll get whatever the reports are, the monitoring, that, that sort of thing on a regular basis. We may discuss them at a meeting, we may simply get them in a, in an email, uh, before a meeting, as part of a meeting package, and discuss them only. I mean, those are the sorts of things that we should be looking at to understand how we can efficiently manage these things.
Yeah, because it, it seems like, just if we're having broad categories, that's organizational operations, you, you just take that exact one that you're talking about to ensure that we have established and oversee policies, procedures, and reporting for these five areas.
Okay.
Um, and, and put it in with organizational operations.
Yes, that's great.
So just for clarity's sake, would this be something where, I'm thinking from a goal-set standpoint, a deliverable, is it, do you want an audit performed during the course of this next fiscal year of our policies, and if there's gaps or changes that we think, from an operator's perspective, need to be addressed, bring it to you folks, like we did with the COSA and the Uniform Guidance as an example, um, for your review discussion, and then see if we wanna make a change, or liquor licensing for that matter, uh, for a change in policy? Is that sort of?
I don't know, we need an audit. I think we just see, just have the copies of whatever the boards had, if they had any, to the extent to which they had them. Um, so we have the policies, and we can re-improve them, and then.
You just mean like internally?
I don't mean a fiscal audit. I just mean like.
Just make sure that.
I, I go with it. Let's, let's hit the policy, the overall.
Well, I mean, again, using cemetery as, as an example, you know, here I was on the cemetery commission, and I don't really know what those policies are. It's now under your peer review, you don't really know what the policies are. So it, and it's probably in part because they probably exist on a sheet of paper that has been photocopied seventeen times, um, because that's the way a lot of our, our stuff was over there. So it may be just as simple as, let's find those policies.
Packaging it.
And update it, and make sure we all know what it is. And then, to your point, Dick, it might be a periodic report, like, you know, this, this month, we're gonna hear from the cemetery department, and here's our status for this quarter or this half.
And I guess it's a, the use of metrics, establishing, you know, what are the metrics? What are you guys watching to make sure that things are going well, or you feel like it's, um, effective, operatingally effective?
Because in, in our monthly cemetery meeting, again.
And again, we can, they discuss it at our meeting, or we, they simply get it as reports.
Steve Shepard would say, you know, this is what we've done this month, here are the applications for, and, you know.
Yes.
It would be a status hearing like that, so.
And as I said, this seems like so many years ago in my old life, the dashboard.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of, these are the things we're looking at. If everything looks good, we're, you know.
And if you identify, you know, these five or however many they are, you could stagger them over meetings. So, you know, we don't get all five in one meeting, but, you know, every third month, Gary's gonna tell us about what's going on in the cemeteries or something.
Now, would it be limited to these departments? Because now that they follow.
Well, no, I was gonna say, it could be any, I don't know.
You know, Police Chief coming in to give an update. I guess the problem, broadly speaking, are we talking across the board? Because it really, I know we just took on this responsibility of overseeing the departments that have been listed on this piece of paper here, but as far, they're kind of part of the team, right? They fell into the same bucket as the other departments. And I see if we, if we say, Gary, we need you to produce these policies, I think there's a place for Chief. And I know Chief, he wrote them, Chief Hubby wrote the policies during the accreditation. So, I mean, he could produce those in a split second and say, and talk for three hours probably, on how, what each of those mean. But I guess my point is, is that it, should we, is there a desire from the board to speak with all of the department heads? And we, we do during the budget cycle, but just as a periodic update how the department's going, or is this just more of a specific because we've?
These are new. These are new to us, and they're new as entities, is how I would look at it. Because I don't know anything about water, cemetery, and parks, because we've never had to oversee it.
You never had to know it, yeah.
But would, would it be an ongoing then? Because again, if it's ongoing, I still feel.
Well, I, that would be, I think there's two things, there's two things. One is to understand the policies and make sure that we have those in place.
So that would be one time for these new ones.
It's a one-time sort of thing. And then, I, I do think that there's a follow-on on a periodic basis that we will get various kinds of reporting. Maybe the water department is quarterly, maybe the cemetery is monthly. I, I don't know why, but it may vary, but we should be having these updates so we know what's going on. And it may be, again, a written report, somebody suggested, you know, the superintendent writes a monthly reporters, but what's going on? That may be helpful, that would be good enough. I, I also like to try to do this stuff, so we don't have to eat up time at a meeting, things that are, okay, that, that, okay, we know. Well, this is, this is an issue. We need to discuss this.
I, I only keep referring back to cemeteries, because obviously, that's the one I have the experience with. But the information was like half, half a sheet of paper. It was like, you know, six lines of info. So that definitely could be handled in, almost, you know, the way we do correspondence, it's at the bottom. You might wanna look, there's an update from the cemetery department on their, their monthly or quarterly, whatever. It could be probably handled that way.
Once the policies are in place, I, I personally wouldn't need to see metrics on the water department. I don't feel the need. I, I feel like Kevin is working with the head, the superintendent of, of water, and even the cemeteries. Once I know the procedure's in place, I don't need to know how many graves are being sold. I, I think that's micromanaging on.